All right, we're gonna get started tonight, legislation in the committee of the whole. It is June fifteenth, the time is five thirty-five P M. We have one, two, three, four, five, six, seven pieces that are in committee. And the first one is introduction to local law number one of two thousand twenty-two, posting owner managing info and designation of agent that I believe is sponsored by. Klassamore, are we okay with this? We're just still keeping it in committee, but we don't have any, anybody speaking as of yet. Okay, introduction, local law, number three, amending section five dash zero two-two of the charter, city charter. That was sponsored by Miola and Williamson.
Uh, Frank, in our pre-meeting, we have an assessment coming, you guys got any questions on it? Dave wants to come at six, I'm sorry that we couldn't get here earlier, but he'll ask questions on local law and hopefully they'll come to board on it, open on it tonight.
Okay, so they'll be making their statements in the next meeting. All right, very good. Very good, proposed ordinance number two, ordinance amending composition of Bureau of Fire, we're already, we already handled that one right now, so we'll probably dispose of that right now.
Want to keep doing that until we find out what's coming from the state grant?
Yeah, would you mind, Council, in the committee, so we can see what the results of state grants are?
Okay. Listen, I'm easy.
We do get along sometimes, isn't that nice? I'm sorry.
All right, we could drop a whole new one, but let's keep it in committee, this way we don't have to have all nine if we drop another. Proposed ordinance number three, ordinance establish your vacant building registry. That is Councilmember Friend.
So I'm waiting on, Corporation Council is currently working with Judge Guaramone, or Judge Guaramone is working with Corporation Council, to figure out whether we can directly abate those fees onto property taxes, which would be beyond awesome, in my view.
Right.
So if Ms. DiGiorgio comes tonight, I will, if there's time, I'd like to ask her just for a general update, or we can ask the judge for a general update about how that's going. But that's the only thing I'm waiting on at this point.
All right, our codes commissioners, okay, is on board with this as well?
Codes commissioners on board with this, it was the mayor's suggestion that we, that we slow it down and see whether we could get it, do the, a direct abatement, or a direct fee, a fee to rack, attached, attached directly to people's property taxes. That was the mayor's, and I, I think it's worth holding off, because if we can get that, that's gonna be pretty sweet.
Yeah, that would be huge.
May I ask a question with Councilwoman Friend? Just to follow up with that, is, we, I know we were talking about some of these properties are nonprofits, was there any solution or look into with what could be done?
Oh, to like, the second chance housing, I believe, right, or that one over on Cooper's, that's one example, that's just an example. Um, yeah, I don't think we specifically spoke about that.
It's not a large number, but.
Yeah, it's an interesting question, though, because I, I tend mostly to think, for me, it's these private, privately owned, either by mortgage or just by people who've kind of absconded, but, uh, single, you know, single family homes in South Utica, those are the ones that are top of my, but, yeah, let me, um, yeah, let me follow up with the...
No worries, thank you.
All right, next up, proposed resolution regarding to establish the business directory app, we're still waiting on a person coming?
Yeah, he just gave me, yes, for another, please.
Okay. All right, moratorium on casinos, proposed ordinance number three, dated five-four-two-thousand twenty-two, is that gonna stay in committee?
If the council don't mind, I'd like to leave that in committee for another.
I like casinos, can we just...
Um, the other issue that, I'm not to digress off the, the last one's the Grove Place, but I spoke to Stephanie DiGiorgio recently, and she's gonna give us an update on all of our codes amendments that we put on the table. The only one that I believe that's gonna be outside our zoning law will be the one for the time, we would have to vote on that piece separately, Mark. She's gonna bring you down a preliminary, and if you want to introduce it and bring it to the table, that'll be up to you after, all right?
So this is about the convenience store, the licensing amendments?
Yeah, there was a piece in there, she'll explain about the lighting, it's already in the zoning, the distance is not, that they're going to correct, how far the convenience stores will be under each other.
The, the other one where to close on a certain time, she stated that that would have to be outside our zoning code, and we'll have to get, if Mark would like to introduce that and bring it to the table next time around, she's gonna bring it down for us, we can go over it in preliminary form and move on it from there, okay?
She's gonna explain detail, for any questions you can bring to her, who wire up, pre-comment to me.
Thank you, Mr., thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, next up, the sale of one-twenty-five, one-twenty-seven Grove Place, we'll be, that'll be bringing it out, we'll be bringing that out tonight, I don't think there's anybody here who's gonna speak on it in their behalf, but we'll see. That is all I have in committee, I, I, I know that Councilman Bietrich had reached out to me regarding a couple of streets that he was looking, maybe we could do something additionally here, uh, on some of the streets, and I know a couple of other council people may have some, getting some feedback on some constituencies regarding their streets, I know there's a number of streets out there that, that need to be done, and we only have so much money allocated to do it, and the five million back in two thousand sixteen, or whenever it was, doesn't stretch as far as two thousand twenty-two, obviously, because of, you know, pricing and what we went through with the pandemic and so forth, so, um, I'm gonna just, if you want to discuss that, I know you did hand out page seventy-seven of the city budget, so if you don't mind us discussing it while we're in the committee of the whole.
Yeah, that's...
I know it hasn't hit the floor yet, but we'll discuss it when we're together.
I wanted to talk to all you guys, everybody here, about the situation here, so, if you guys, we do five million in paving, we borrow, we usually borrow from CHIPS and different two-point-five million, if you look this year, we only borrowed ninety-three thousand. My biggest problem that I have is the paving program is for five million dollars. If you look down under New York State revenue, you see, you're gonna see five-hundred-and-forty-one-thousand dollars that was in the budget this year, and it's for, the only thing that this five-hundred-and-forty-one-thousand dollars can be used for is a state road through a city, and we have one of those, that's Herkimer Road. We received this money last year, and I never brought it up because we paved over five million dollars last year, I think we did close to eight million, am I correct, Mike? So, my thinking is here, I'm sure all six wards, you have people calling you about the streets that need paved, what got cut off the paving program, regardless, but in my mind here, and I just want to get feedback from all you guys, in my mind, the minimum we should be paving is five million, five-hundred-and-forty-one-thousand dollars. That money from, that's not part of our five million dollars, that's five-hundred-thousand, five-forty-one, that the state gave us, over and above. So to put that money in, Herkimer Road is getting done, but to put that in and cut other streets off, to me is an injustice, not just to my district, but to every one of your districts. So, um, you know, I'm waiting for some numbers from Heather, I gave her four or five streets that I need, that I think are very bad, Mike knows, um, I'm sure I'm not the only one that is getting bombarded with streets that need to be paved, you know? So I just wanted to bring that up and just get a little input from all you guys, do you guys feel the same way that I'm feeling on this?
I think it's, I think that Joe's making a really good case, for the idea that this is money that's sort of over and above the five million we're supposed to spend, and at the same time, I know that last year when we spent eight million, right, when we, when we tried to go really big, we found ourselves in, really close to a lot of trouble, right? So if the snow had fallen a week earlier than it did, we would have been in a position of having to literally start slicing down manhole covers, or, or not plow roads, though we had some really bad options before us. So, I mean, I, I, I think that you're making a really good point, Joe, I think that's a really good argument, that that five-forty-one-thousand is sort of like found money, and we should treat it like found money, not like the straight budget of five million, I, I see that argument, and then I also really understand Mr. Mahoney's point of view, which is that he doesn't want to once again put himself, put us in a position where we start trying to pave more streets than we can. Now, this year, can I just want to say one more thing? I know that this year we're doing things a little bit differently, which is that, and I'm sure that Mr. Mahoney can talk about this better than I can, but that we're arranging with our contractors that they have to start and finish a street within a certain period of time. So rather than mill everything, repair everything, first coat everything, top coat everything, we're milling, repairing, filling, top coating every, a few streets at a, X number of streets at a time, right, and then move on to the next batch, right, so that we don't end up in this position where too many streets are open for too long.
We put a time limit of five weeks.
Right, and that's in the contract. Which means that we'll sort of be, we'll sort of be leapfrogging.
So, it, it really divides our program up into three segments, so we'll do, like say, South Utica, maybe East Utica in one segment, we break it up, so that way we don't have the whole city open like we did last year.
Right, and so one of the things that I, I think that that's smart, it means that we're spending a little bit more money, but...
It does, no, you're spending a lot more.
Okay, but it also means that we are not taking the risks that we took last year.
Well, if you have, if I could just finish the thought, we have a couple of things that are going on this year, just as we're talking about paving, I didn't come here to talk about paving, I just happened to come, the, um...
You came here, did you miss us?
I did, no, I came here about orders from Stephanie.
Well, we see you, we see paving.
Petroleum is up, which, which is up the cost of pavement, they gotta truck it up here, there's petroleum in tar, so, number one, that, that skitties down the amount of streets that we're doing, and obviously we ended up cutting some streets, beginning twelve streets over everything, um, but I mean, going to your theory of the five-hundred-and-fifty-thousand dollars, which is the only bird in the road, I get that, I understand that, I also understand that to, to do that theory, you have Winter Republic, you have Chip's, you have Six Fifth Thousand, so, I mean, to go with that theory, then you would say that that's all extra money. Which is what you, because you've gotta remember that we have to borrow money, so, I mean, I think what Heather's point is, that she's just trying to minimize the amount of debt that we have out there, so she's just trying to weigh it out.
You, but, yeah, on that same, am I still, do I still have?
You could go ahead and answer, then, Councilmember Mamiel.
But just two things that I want to say, as far as that goes, this New York State touring money is not in there every year, it was in there the last two years, so what you're talking about is in there every year.
Correct.
Okay, and it's the same thing with CBGG, meaning...
Well, you never know how much it's gonna be.
Okay, but the same thing, you guys want to have the argument that you can't use it for streets in North Utica?
I don't have the argument at all.
Okay, okay, but, no, I'm just telling you, but, so that does happen, so this is, this is different money than what goes on every year, for the last two years. Getting back to Celeste's point, okay, five-hundred-thousand over five million is a lot less than three million over five million, okay? My second, my third point is, the streets that I'm telling you in North Utica, they're not two-way streets where you're going up and down, they're basically neighborhood streets, number one, number two, there's no curbing, okay, that you can get done fast, okay, there's very minimal, obviously, we don't even have storm drains, so there's very minimal storm drains where you have to do any of that work, okay, there's, that's just my point, to me, to me, I'm not the smartest guy in the world, but if we're borrowing five million, and the state gives you five-hundred-and-fifty-thousand, on top of the five million, you need to, you need to use that, that's all I'm trying to say.
That's, that's not up to him.
No, 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 I know, I'm just...
The argument's not, I'll paint as many streets as you can give me money for, but I don't want to get into the position of we had last year, where it's October and everybody's upset, we're still...
But, but that was three million over five, and you're paving, you're paving, even for the five million, you're paving, you just said twelve streets less than you did last year, and it's...
We, I, we shaved twelve streets.
Well, okay.
What we were planning on doing this year.
Right.
A lot of it has to do with the cost of...
Right, and, and I, I understand that, but I'm saying we should, you know, like I said, they don't...
They're gonna consider it, because I did speak to the, the budget director, so let's, let Councilman Mamiel have the floor.
I think maybe I can assist in some kind of, first, the finance part of it, the mayor gave the ARPA money, he put two million dollars in, and the other half a million came from, of course, New York State paving, that constitutes us not going to debt for the two-point-five million, Joseph.
Correct.
So that offsetted us to get to the five million, all right, so I, just let me finish, okay? So that's the simple, that's the finance part, simply, that's why he didn't put more CDBG money in, which is Community Development Block Grant, it's only in certain zones, as Mike Mahoney can attest to, the Community Development Block Grant's not for the whole city, it's only for certain areas, that's, let me, let me finish, Joseph.
Okay, I like you.
So, with, with that said, as you saw in the prior years, it's, it's right in front of you, very simple, that he put like almost a million dollars for the CDBG money, but he was able to use the ARPA money to offset our debt, and that was very, very important this year, and Mike Mahoney's not also telling us, what she omitted to, is that when they start our roads, okay, sometimes they run into very nasty trouble, for example, when that lovely roller goes down the road and you see the road doing this, boom, boom, look at the smile on Mike Mahoney's face, know what that means, guys? That means the foundation of roads sucks, okay? It's, it's falling apart, and they have to, they have to redo it and start all over again, okay? So, the cost of roads is very deeper, is very hard, it's very hard to guess what's in our, underneath those roads nowadays, we don't know if there's collapsing pipes, we don't know if the concrete, the eight-inch rebar concrete is all crumbling, okay, you don't know, so prices on road, it could start for four-hundred-thousand dollars and end up to be over one-point-something million by the time we're done with it, to do the road right, okay, so at last. So, the finance part, Joe, I hope I explained it to you, and the, the paving part, there's change orders, Michael's, probably his head turns around like he's coming from a different plan, some of the change orders he gets because of the roads. We only do so much core sampling, all right, if you, if you ever got into these roads, you understand that core sampling also helps, tells us what's underneath the roads before he even goes out and paves, and core sampling, sometimes you get plus and negative, sometimes it's right, sometimes it's wrong, but the bottom line, you can't put a price on a road until it's done, and he's the best guy that we're seeing, thank you.
Okay, all right, I just want to add to... Okay, all right, I, I just want to add to that. The good thing is, we got $5 million allocated for paving without borrowing any money. So that's a great thing.
That's enormous.
That, that is great. But I did speak to Heather and our budget director, and she said there is a possibility of maybe some money left over. They're going to get a, there's a few streets out there, not only in your district, but there's a couple council members, I believe, wanted some streets on. So they're going to get a cost analysis of what, what it may cost. And if we can, we might be able to use some CDBG money, maybe use more ARPA money. Maybe you are willing to donate some of your 200,000 towards it a little bit, you know? If you have some left over, the, the six districts that he, that he allocated ARPA money for. So that's something that we may, she said that we may look into. But let, let's first get the cost, see what it costs. I know some of the streets in North Utica are very short and narrow, whatever. So let's get the cost and let's see where we stand, and then maybe we could find out if we can do it first of all, if there's enough time, and, you know, how we're going to pay for it without borrowing any money. So that's, that's, that's my theory.
Can I, I just want to follow up on Councilman Miola's point on a couple of items, okay? City, we have a paving plan, then we do 5 million in streets. It's got nothing to do with that 500,000 over and above. Now, just listen to me for one second. You also want to come back and tell me that they're using CBDG money, but it's not in all the areas. So they take the CBG money and they put it in a pot, and it's in part of the 5 million dollars. So their, their list broke down that says, we paved this, 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 and this in Katie's district or in Bob's district. There's no, there's not, they put the money in a pot. So they.
No, he's got a paving list.
You've got a paving list.
Yeah, it's not true.
Okay, but is, is that broke down?
We could waive it, we could waive it, make it the whole city if we really wanted to.
Is that broke down? I'm asking a question. Is it broke down that says we put, what'd you say they put in there from CBDG?
Prior years?
No, this year, what'd they?
This year, only 903,000.
93, okay. So is it broke down? Is it broke down? What streets are getting done with that 93,000? Okay.
Because if, if I didn't do a street in that area, we wouldn't be able to use the money.
Can I have the floor for one second?
Uh, are you done? I'm done, that's all right, go ahead.
Okay, sorry, I haven't spoke, and why I agree to your.
Are you here?
No, I know, I'm back, hey, surprise. Why I agree to, to Joe's point, it doesn't matter where we get the 5 million dollars from as long as we pay 5 million dollars worth of roads. However, because we didn't borrow this year, and we got an additional 500,000 for paving, it would only make sense to allocate that additional 549,000 to paving. I mean, that's, that's the only thing that I was saying, and that's, and I, and I agree with them to that extent. It was nice not to borrow, but we really got that money allocated for a specific reason, and, you know, obviously.
I'm not, I'm not the budget director. However, however, had you not put the 500,000 in the 5 million, you probably would have had to borrow that one.
Unless we, unless we, unless we use that 8 million dollars for the Harbor Point, you know?
Okay.
Through ARPA funding for it, could have done that, too.
Councilperson friend, we have the floor.
My point about earlier describing the new process whereby it's built into the contract that a street has to be started and finished within five weeks, is that this is a new system that we haven't used before. We know that Rome uses it and likes it, and I think we're going to learn a lot this year about whether that's going to, about how much more we can get paved reasonably in a year. That's, that was sort of my, most of my point about bringing that up. It also means that we're getting a little bit less mileage with the same dollar amount, but at the end of this year, we'll be in a better position to know whether that is worth it. And I don't want to try to have this argument now, but I, I think that at some point we ought to talk about whether using CDBG fund to provide the, the most basic service that a city provides is really appropriate within the spirit of CDBG funds. I, I have some questions about that.
Good, okay, I, I, I think we're all done with this discussion. Oh, go ahead.
You said that, um, there's going to be, um, you already pulled 12 roads off the paving. Uh, out of the paving list. Um, how did you decide that? Do you know which roads, um, were pulled, and are we going to be informed of that?
They're not on the list.
They're not on the list.
Not off the published list that we already set.
Oh, okay.
Published list is the published list.
Okay.
He means before he got that.
Before, before that list came out.
What he was saying, there were 13, 14, 15, 16, 17, 18, 19, whatever those 12 additional were in there. But if he had those additional funds, they could use them there.
All right.
Council, Mr. Master.
Now, now, you've, you've talked about the 5 million dollars for, for the paving, and, and it cost us that a year, whether it's borrowed money or pre-money. And, and we paved a street, I don't care what it is. The lifetime of a street is what, seven and a half to eight years?
Well, we're, we're just milling and filling.
Right.
Somewhere between eight, 10, 12.
And, and we're taking out a 15-year note for eight, a seven-and-a-half-year job, and then before you know it, we're borrowing again to do the same job, and we haven't paid off the first note. So we've got to address our long-term debt at some point in the future. You know, the sooner the better, because it's just going to keep on growing and growing, because, and, and that's all my concern is, because I, I don't understand, you know? I understand that people wanted this money, and, and it's great, and we, we do all this paving. I, I'd like to have all the streets done at one time. It's just financially and physically impossible. But just be concerned about the long-term debt that we're going to incur, whether it be tomorrow or five years from today. And, and, and I'm just afraid for the future administrations that are going to take over the city to have to endure this debt.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Thank you, good point. Okay, that'll conclude. Committee of the whole meeting.
Take a couple-minute break, and we'll start in six minutes. Be good. You guys want to be first, if the council doesn't mind, we'll put.
Council members, please take your seats. I'd like to begin the pre-meeting conference for June 15th, 2022.
I told them to put it on for the August meeting. So we have time to get it set to planning board and.
Council members, Marima was kind enough to pass out a little memo. The assessor, Richard Maxwell, is here. We'll start with just a quick summary to tell us what this local law will change. And we'll open up the table for questions.
Well, about 25, 30 years ago, New York State made a mandate across the state that everyone go into the same taxable status dates of March 1st, tentative roll on May 1st, final roll on July 1st. Home rule for cities allowed them to not adopt that. So across the state now, we've got probably 85 to 90 percent of the towns and cities that have these taxable status dates set up on this schedule. We're one of the malingers. And if you can see, that note is actually from the New York State Office of Real Property and Taxation, and they're chiding us because they can't get their forms out for this fall for senior citizens.
Oh, the STAR program.
The STAR program.
Ooh, they're getting mad at us.
Because they wait for us to get our program in place before they can issue those new forms. So what I'm suggesting is that we just go into alignment with the rest of the state and have our taxable status dates the same as theirs. So it would mean that we would have to redo our tentative roll. We'll get it done for August for us this year, and then we'll just do it again for May 1st for next year. There's not any real implications to anyone except for who we send out notices to anyway to have them come in and do renewals. So we already notified them. And we've been telling them as they come in now that next year is probably going to be different. So we believe we can, you know, we can do this. And there's many other things. Because right now, all the training for the assessors and for the assessor staff is usually done in July. And we're here because we can't go anyplace because we've got people coming in with their exemptions and discussing their values and everything else. So there is a certain amount of training all of us have to take, and we get shut out of it. The Board of Assessment Review, we don't get people on it until later on, and the training is done back in April because they're getting trained for their grievance day in May. But our grievance day isn't until end of August. So we had a huge mix-up last year trying to get our Board of Assessment Review people in and get them trained because the trainers are gone. When we look to get anything done, everybody we try to talk to, they're gone in July. Last year, I had some problems with the system. You know, I had to get, because I know him, it's the only way I got the techie from Albany to help us out of it because he was home on vacation. So it really is going to help the running of the department and meeting all the standards that are coming in from Albany when they give out all of their information. All their information is based on March 1st as taxable status date, and then we have to translate it. So that's basically what we're trying to do.
Thank you, Richard. Marima, anything? If not, I'll open up the table. You're good.
Thank you very much. So I have a couple of questions. One is, do we have any idea why 25, 30 years ago, the City of Utica invoked home rule in order to stay out of sync with everybody else? That's one question. So my second question is, you're now, if we pass this, and I think we probably will, but I want to know, I guess I just want to hear the answer to this question. You're going to be doing a year's worth of work in six months. And then next year, you'll be doing a year's worth of work in a year. But you've basically made your next deadline only six months from now rather than a year from when it would be. So I'd like to know whether that affects, et cetera. And then the other question I want to know, and this is more general. I'll hold that other question.
Okay. The, let's see. I won't be doing a full year's worth of work, okay? I'll be doing the same, I'll be doing six months' worth of work, okay? We'll be putting all the information in, going out and checking our permits and doing all that kind of stuff up until March 1st. So that's our cutoff date. So that just, it just changes our cutoff date on when we're going to do things. Now, I've already talked to some of the people in the IDA and other places to let them know that this will be coming. So if you're going to do a pilot, you've got to be in by March 1st now, you know, to get into the program. But since so many of them seem to be coming in in September, it actually probably is going to be better. Because last year, we got inundated, you know, at that timeframe. So now, the other, the first part of the.
Why did we invoke home rule 25, 30 years ago?
I've, we've asked Charlie Brown, we asked Dave Williams, we talked to our state reps, and all of them just going, we don't know. There's no history there at all. It was, maybe they just didn't want to do it.
Just felt the wrath.
Yeah.
Okay, thank you.
Um, I, wait.
I got a quick question.
Oh, okay. Samantha, go ahead.
We're changing taxable status from the 1st, April 1st to March 1st?
August 1st.
August 1st.
From August 1st to March 1st.
To March 1st.
Yes.
But not until next year. Right.
It's the assessor, not the tax bill.
Right, and it's the assessor, so this is only to do with grievance, et cetera.
Correct.
This won't change when tax bills go out.
Nope.
None of that, correct?
Nope, none of it. And I've already cleared all that with Controller's Office.
Good. I just wanted to ask the question.
Samantha, you all set?
The only question I had, and he kind of just answered, I guess Mike partially entered it. Well, you answered it for Mike. April 1st, why not? Why not April 1st till we know after the budget's passed? Is it kind of to get it before the budget goes in? I mean, what is, what was the difference between?
Well, your budget.
I mean, just so that we could budget for it, knowing the grievances and so on and so forth, I guess.
Your budget is based upon the prior year's roll anyway.
Right, right.
So it's still going to be based on, there's going to be basically no difference.
Okay. So it wouldn't affect till next year's budget anyway?
Right.
Okay. Because I'm pretty sure we tried doing this, and I thought that there was a big argument whether we did April 1st when we changed it from.
The final roll is July 1st.
Right.
So that's when the actual numbers are in.
Okay.
So all of the city bills and everything will be out in the past. It's confusing right now because I sent out the tentative roll on August 1st, and people start looking at that who've got to pay their school bills, and they start thinking, well, that's my, no, that has nothing to do with what's going to come on your school bill. So that becomes very confusing.
Right, right. And I remember, I remember those discussions that we used to have a while ago. Because we even tried changing like the actual tax bill so that we would know when, you know, we were receiving that money rather than after. Because, I mean, at that, at that time, we had, you know, paid the school district money because we didn't have money in our, you know. So, I mean, it was, it was a nightmare. But, you know, now that you clarified that, I appreciate that.
Officer.
Thank you.
Okay. I just got to have one. Can we talk about the STAR exemption, guys? Because that's more important to all these people out there. Is the form available online at the city website that they can download it and fill it out, bring it in? What's up?
Well, any new STAR exemption is done through the state now. They don't come through us.
So the state has, is there a website?
There's a website, they call, we give them, we send them the information, or we give them the hotlines to call. But if you're currently a senior and continuing through us.
Okay.
We still go and do that.
You take care of that paperwork for a person who already has a STAR exemption, is that correct?
The enhanced STAR.
The enhanced STAR.
Yes.
Well, the new ones that request the STAR exemptions have to go to the state.
Since 2015, they made it that if you change your address.
Okay.
You know, if you move from one house to another, you have to go and apply to the state for your STAR, whether it's basic or enhanced.
Okay. Is it possible we can share that and put it on our website, on the city website? In addition to that, we can put it on the council's website so people want to receive?
We can put it on.
You can put it on Celeste's website.
I'm sure, I'm sure. Don't interrupt me. Don't interrupt me.
I'm sorry. Don't interrupt.
We have, we have like a whole, a couple of the state agents, home rule, the 20-year thing, we have in our office, we have the controllers, we can definitely put it.
Yeah, the more we can spread it out there, the less questions we'll get because, and I'll put it on my phone because I do get a lot of questions about this exemption.
And the other thing to show everyone's aware, we've been getting a lot of calls. There's a state issuing a rebate check for.
Property owners, the governor, Governor Hochul.
Yes. That has STAR already, it's like a one-time thing. And again, just for everyone's clarification, another confusing thing is, if it's done through the state, one quarter, you buy a house, you get STAR. You get, you pay your full tax, okay, in September, and then you get a refund check from the state. If you had the exemption, we reached that prior to 2015, you bought your house prior to 2015, you get the exemption right off the bill. So not every single person gets a check normally, okay? It depends on when you pay on it. But this year, we get this one-time rebate thing.
So after that, it's going to be different.
And that, and that had nothing to do with the assessor's office. We were surprised with anyone.
Right.
So they have different forms of payment, sometimes checks, sometimes reduction in taxes.
If you became, if you have STAR after 2015, you will get the rebate check.
Okay.
Okay? But if you had it prior to 2015, the stuff comes right off the bill, like a line.
Off your tax bill.
Off the tax.
Which one? There's three taxes.
School tax. STAR is only for schools.
So it'll come off the school tax bill?
Yes, yes.
Okay, all right. Is everybody clear with that? Because if they ask you questions, you know where it's going. Oh, looks like our president, Mike Gleam, has got a question. Hit it.
I wanted to check before I confirmed it, but if you go to the Department of the Assessor on the City of Utica website, there is a page for registering for the basic and enhanced STAR credits. It's on the site.
It's already there?
Yeah, it's already there.
Excellent.
So, and there's links to it. We may want to ask Frank Matullo to make sure the current links are the newest links because a couple of years ago, it was changed as they were stating. But yeah, I believe this is, this is up to date. Yeah, it was updated in March. Yeah, yeah.
Could you guys check the links out and make sure everything goes easy after?
All right. Thanks.
Yeah, just as long as we have the assessor here. I'm worried about our, the revaluation that we need to do sooner or later that we're going to have to do.
I'm worried about it.
I bet. I bet you're more worried than I. Part of that, we, it's basically, it's enormous data collection, right?
Yeah.
It's one way to think about it. It's an enormous set of data points. You're understaffed, right? If you were better staffed now, we would, when this revale happens, whenever it happens, we would be in a better position in relation to that revale?
Well, the, all revales are based upon data.
Right.
The better the data, the better the revale. And if we had people that were able to go out and start collecting data now, one is it would have a lesser effect on how much we'd have to bring in from an outside source to do it. And two is that, you know, we'd have some good information already compiled.
Right. So we would, the revale that we're going to have to do sooner or later would be less expensive the sooner we start collecting data on our own through staff in your office, correct?
Yes.
Yep.
May I, what data do you need specifically?
Well, there's commercial, and then there's residential. Or you need everything from, on a residential, you need the size of the lot, to type of construction, type of residence it is, is it a?
Everything.
Two-family, three-family, bedrooms, bathrooms, how it's heated, how it's air-conditioned, garage underneath it, garages, sheds.
Do you literally just go house to house and examine these and try to contact the?
Well, typically, I've done revales all over the state for 20 years, and typically what we did was we sent out a letter to everybody saying, the revale people will be coming by, they'll knock on your door, they'll have identification, they'll, you know, whatever areas they can see, they will do and take photos and will, you know, measure the front of your house. If you don't want to come on your property, please send us a note. That kind of stuff.
The way I've been trying to do it is essentially when there's a building permit that's repiled, that'll kind of trigger for me to go out there and take a look at it, mainly, you know, additions and obviously, but you have, there's a lot that's kind of gone underneath the rug because people do work sometimes, they don't get a permit, but at the same time, you still have to collect that data and make sure the record is applied.
But, but in relation to the coming revale?
Wait, wait, wait. She's.
Oh, no, I hope that.
Then I got to go see.
Okay.
Samantha?
I think the most important part, and why everyone's been so hesitant on a revale is because your dollar amount doesn't change. So people are going to go up on their taxes, and people are going to go lower on their taxes. But the fact that the city's been assessed at God only knows how many million dollars more goes to show you that there's growth in the city, and that, that makes a difference, and it might not affect everybody's taxes, you know? So I think that new buildings being built and, you know, people investing their money and you look at the commercial properties, my biggest thing if we do a revale is concerning pilot programs. Because a lot of the pilot programs that we have out there now really wouldn't affect that tax base. So you'd still have to make up that dollar amount through those properties.
Actually, many of the pilots are written in such a way that the assessed value becomes part of the formula.
By percentage.
So if we revale and get, because I have your, I have, I share your concern, and I'm looking at some of the pilots and thinking, the assessed value on some of these were, you know, when they were originally done, are low.
Are low.
We, we have to go, and one of the other things that is a lot, when you do a revale, any certs or anything else that you've done in the past and agreements that you had in the past, the revale overrides.
Okay, so if you have a pilot program, you would have to renegotiate that pilot program based on that evaluate, based on that revale?
They, no, flip it around. They're going to come and argue with us on whether our assessed value is correct.
That's, that's interesting. Because even though their tax evaluation is still the same, you know, still equal.
And then they can have that discussion about, you know, we figure out now what the new formula is based upon the new effective date.
Wow. That's quite interesting. Because I think that that would help us out wholeheartedly, I mean, in many cases. For example, I mean, I think Hotel Utica was one of our biggest examples in as far as what the tax, what their, what their, whatever, the tax evaluation was on their property was, was like $300,000, and they invested all that money. So, I mean, it's definitely not worth only $300,000 now, which is, which is going to, okay. All right.
Officer.
Makes me want it even more now, so I appreciate that.
Officer.
Officer.
Celeste?
I guess, I just wanted to emphasize that this is a case where if we spent a little bit more money now by, by giving you more staff so that you could do ongoing data collection, we would save more money down the road when we actually have to do the revale. That was my point, right? So this is one of those cases where spend more money now and save more, spend some money now and save more money later. That's, it seems to me.
And one of the, one of the beauties of the revale is, because I work with, you know, I've done the revales in other towns, nothing this size, but I've done it. Right now, I have no models. A revale comes in and it goes through the real property system and sets up models, cost models and market models and land tables and all these things. So next piece of construction comes through, all I got to do is run it through the models and I can put a value on it. I have no, no thing like that. I've got to call out to an appraiser or someone else to try to give me a value on these properties because our models don't work. And that's all built right into the system.
Right.
And, and the thing is, the models we based upon our year that we ran the revale, so I don't have to do any reductions or anything because it's based on the value on the day that everyone else was valued. So it automatically puts you in at the value you should be in, not at a, something that I have to go and reduce or something.
Does, is that because the 1998, when we last did a revale, they weren't doing modeling? Like, they didn't use modeling in the same way? That's why we don't have a model to use now?
Yeah.
Right? Because modeling is a fairly new.
Well, I mean, it, it had rudimentary modeling. It's nothing like what it has today.
Right. Okay. Thank you very much.
Michael.
I just had a comment. Maybe you could share with them what it might cost us for the city to do a revale.
It depends. I mean.
Yeah, but if he gets people in his office, he's trained to do it.
It's going to be like anywhere between $30 and $50 per parcel for a residential and probably 100 to 200 a parcel for, depending on how unique the commercials are.
Against $64 million.
Pardon? Very good. Commercial, 100 to 200 bucks per. Yeah.
What does that add up to?
Well, there's 22,000 parcels, roughly, roughly.
So if you gave it an average of 75 or something like that, are you doing it in it an average of 75?
Someone did it, someone did math.
No, but I don't know.
1.5 million dollars.
Yeah, a couple of years ago, we did the math. It was around 1.5.
So if everybody puts their $200,000, then we can accomplish it.
Any other questions on the local law, council members? I'd like to bring it to the table so we could vote on it tonight. Any questions? I'd like to close the table and start our legislation. Very good. Marima, Mr. Maxwell, thank you so much for coming tonight.
Thank you.
We can't, all we're doing is laying it on the table tonight, correct?
No, we can vote on it.
No, you can't.
No, we have not laid it on the table.
If you haven't laid it on the table, it's got to sit on the table some days.
You don't have to because it was in committee. If you want to check with the judge, go ahead.
Oh, okay.
This, the seven-day law is for notification, not on the table.
Being in committee is the.
If it changed, then yes, we need seven days after it changed, but it didn't change.
We've had this discussion before.
If you want, talk with him.
We never laid the local law on the table, we put it in committee. The real property tax law, the taxable status check. We discussed this at the last meeting, said if you want, if you want to vote on it, we got it laid on the table, we didn't, we decided to put it in committee.
Well, they, they moved, put it on the table.
Exactly.
They put it in committee.
Right, so.
Whether that qualifies as a legal question.
We've been over it.
That's what I was asking you.
It does not. Yeah, well, he's saying it doesn't. So we got to lay it on the table.
I'd say just because you didn't act, you really didn't act on it.
Yeah, we got to lay it on the table.
It's got to be, it's got to be in its final form for seven days.
It's going to be laid on the table or something.
Did you follow the procedure under the statute that you take a look at law, you make a motion to lay it on the table, and then the motion passes, it's on the table?
You never called for a public hearing.
As I recall, you put it in committee law. So in fact, there was no action, it was in action. And I don't think that that didn't action personally.
Right.
From my legal point of view, is the way you asked.
Right, and that's, I agree with the judge. We've done this before where if we laid it on the table, that would put the council people, the body, on notice that in seven days, it may be voted on. We did not do that.
We're enjoying it.
So we'll have to.
It doesn't matter. I'm okay with it because we got time, but the research that I did about.
July 6th, we'll be back.
Yeah, I'm, I'm.
It's a shorter time table anyway.
We got time on it, but I did research on the local laws. And the reason why we lay it on the table is because the minimum time that the council could look at it for seven days. But the seven-day rule also constitutes something else, has to be in its final form for seven days. So sitting in committee, it didn't change, we didn't amend anything. So I believe that for a structure of legislation part, that we can vote on it tonight, but I'll wait.
So, well, so regardless of any conversation, if we try to vote on it tonight, I'm not going to process the motions. I'm only going to allow the body to lay it on the table.
We'll move it on the table for seven days.
Yeah, thanks.
It's not till March 2023.
I'm good with that. I guess, but I'm just.
Seven days ain't going to kill us.
I did, local laws be, I don't know.
They might have not been right.
I'll find, we'll check it out later just to show you guys. All right. Next one, we're on a first resolution, which is dated June 15th. It's on Cartman. And this is.
It'll be August 3rd.
Yeah, but council members, oh, this is closing the streets. Okay, I'm sorry. This is for, this is for closing Lafayette Street, August 3rd. The first piece, I think, is calling for the public hearing. This will, we would have to vote on it tonight, it is a resolution. Is everybody okay with August 3rd?
Yeah.
Okay. Let's move. Go ahead, you got a question?
No, that's all right.
The rest of them are fine. Because we're only calling for the public hearing.
Number two is for the sale of the property, I think, or is it discontinues of Lafayette? So that's going in committee? Does everybody understand that? All right? So number two in committee. And the first one, we would have to pass by calling for a public hearing. The next one is legislation number three, it's the discontinues of Cornell, Cornell Street?
Cornelia.
Cornelia, I'm sorry, Cornelia Street. And then again, that's calling for a public hearing for August 3rd. Is everybody okay with calling for the public hearing for August 3rd? Okay. Very good. We have to vote on that tonight. It is a resolution. The following piece is the piece of the actual closure of the property, which would have to go into committee. Everybody okay with that? Next piece is the discontinues of Lafayette from Broad to State Street. There's two pieces of Lafayette that we are closing. Again, calling for a public hearing August 3rd. Is everybody okay with it? And the adjacent closure.
Where?
Actually, for is.
It's from.
Broad Business 6.
Broadway to State.
Calling.
I feel you're driving.
Everybody okay with that?
You guys can tell me the public hearing. Just want to make sure we close.
We are now on ordinance number seven, sponsored by Councilwoman Allo. Would you like the floor to explain this to your county?
Yeah, it's just standard. The person who lives there doesn't have access to, she doesn't have her own driveway and just needs parking for handicap accessibility.
Very good. Any questions? Our last piece of legislation is the, that county has a mitigation, mitigation plan. What department is overseeing this?
Me. Just right here.
Michael, you have the floor.
I didn't come for page. I can't do this.
Gotcha.
Actually, Stephanie handles this for me. We're asking that you pass this tonight, just because the county needs our decision by six, seven. Adopting this plan will make us eligible for future hazard mitigation funding. It's different than disaster money, but it only benefits us, and so keeps us eligible for future hazard mitigation funds.
Samantha, you have the floor.
The only, I mean, I don't mind passing this. Obviously, it's, you know, goes with the flow of adopting mitigation plans, but do you mind if we get a copy of it?
Oh, sure. You should.
That would be the only thing, and we never get a copy of it, so that would be the only thing I ask, but I know this is formality, so I don't mind passing it tonight. Thanks, Mike.
Any other questions pertaining to this piece of legislation? It is a resolution, so the majority?
Six seventeen.
Oh, seven, Agarthi.
Seventeen.
Council members, this also needs a waiver.
Rod, you got to be going, Rod. You got the waiver.
Everybody good with the waiver rule?
Going on over here.
All right.
They're not letting you come down.
Any other questions for Mike Mahoney on this legislation?
No. He's secure.
Okay, our pre-council meeting is closed.
Are there any other discussions? Right here.
Oh, Frankie DeBrango, go ahead.
I can't see.
I can't see Stephanie's, there you go, Stephanie.
Regarding the street closings, I think, I did speak to some people regarding the street closings. What I'd like to do, once it's in committee, maybe our next committee meeting, invite someone from MBHS just to see what we're going to be closing, where it is, maybe an overhead map, as well as the police and fire department to make sure we're okay with closing somebody's streets off and things of that nature. So that's all I wanted to do, so I'll get ahold of the clerk, and we can maybe have a little discussion on it as a council, just to see what's going to be done and why.
Well, I think Councilman DeBrango would like something in writing stating from the police and the fire, that when we do close these streets, if there's any properties that still need service, public safety service, that you guys are able to get there. All right?
Right, especially with, like, I think I spoke to you regarding the fire department, making sure that they reach certain areas if they can, you know, within the hospital grounds, maybe they have to hook up to a standpipe or whatever it may be, but I just want to get confirmation that it's okay with police and fire, what they want to accomplish as far as where they want to close the streets, that's all.
Very good, Council.
All right.
You okay with it, Deputy Chief? You okay with sending us something very nicely? Thank you.
All right, that's all.
Mike, you have something? You look like you do.
Brain Thomas, aren't all of these closures just becoming part of the campus?
Yeah, it's all part of the plan.
Yeah, that's, I mean, it's in the actual plan right now, that these roads are being...
You're abandoning them.
Yeah, we're abandoning them.
Yeah, we're abandoning them.
Yeah, they're already closed.
So this is, these are all going to literally become part of the hospital campus.
And actually, specifically, I believe, the garage, part of the garage.
Right, right, right.
There'll still be egress and entries and egress for both Lafayette and Cornell.
So could you, could you just send the council, it hasn't been, it's been a while, the map, current campus, and then they'll just be able to, you know, check it out?
Sure.
I'm not saying that Frank will have his questions addressed by MBHS, but I'm saying that...
Make sure maybe if they have to have an accessway somewhere, somehow, the place is pretty big, and my concern is, I'll tell you what my concern is. They're going to have a helicopter landing pad, I guess, according to them, on the roof or something, and I just want to make sure that the fire department has proper access to this helicopter, because the original plan was to be on the ground. So I just want to make sure that there's access through standpipe.
I would argue that the helicopter plan was not originally planned.
That's all I wanted to do. That's the way I think sometimes.
And to support Councilman DeBrango, I think that plumbing store is still working right now, so I'm not sure if this, these streets are one of them, so I think, I think we gotta make sure that the police and fire could respond.
They're on Columbia Street.
So that's outside of that?
They agreed to use the rear access, and we had, we went down. I went personally and visited when I saw it.
Plumbing is currently closed, but it will reopen once they, once they finish.
Closing up. Just to clarify, just to clarify, the reason I would like Commissioner Thomas to send this plan to the council is so that when we ask questions to MBHS, if they do come here, or when they do come here, I should say, because we're going to request, that the questions will be directed from us looking at the actual plan.
Yes.
That way, we can have a back and forth and be done with it. All right.
Councilwoman Allo, you good with all this? Because it's your district.
Thank you.
Okay. All right, we'll close. Any, any other discussions? Very good, we'll close, take a nice 25-minute break, Council. Thank you.
Hammerstone, we're good.
Okay, it is July 15th, 2022. I'm going to call this meeting of the common council to order. Clerk, can you please call it a roll?
Ayello, Burmaster, Friend, Miola, Urban, Beatrice, Williamson, Calasamo, Testa, Debrango, Gleamy, all present.
Please rise for the pledge of allegiance, followed by a moment of silence for the deceased members of the council.
Pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice in all.
First order of business this evening, the minutes of previous meeting.
Make a motion.
All right, there's a motion. What is that motion? To dispense?
To dispense.
All right, we're going to dispense of the reading of the minutes. Is there a second? Was that you, Ayello? All right, perfect. Any opposed to dispensing of the reading of the minutes? All right, the minutes have been accepted from the previous meeting. Next order of business is public hearing. We do in fact have a property this evening. It is 125 to 127 Grove Place, which sits in committee. Public hearing was called at the previous meeting. No one has signed up to speak on behalf of that property, so the public hearing is now closed. And I'd like to entertain a motion to pull ordinance three dated 6/1/2022 for committee.
So, Mr. President?
All right, we have a motion.
I just, we just got to make sure his spelling of his name's correct.
Dmitri?
Yeah, at our ordinance, it's D-M.
Um...
It's not how you spell Dmitri. I mean, it might be, but I'm pretty sure it isn't.
I was told it was got to be pasted from the property.
No, I did that. I clarified it with the city clerk, that that's where it came from, so...
Okay.
How do you spell Dmitri, Brian, do you know?
Well, there's, there are two...
D-M-I.
It's D-M-I?
Yeah, there's two, yeah. There are two spelling.
All right, just want to do a couple checks.
It wasn't our sheet.
All right, so who's the second to pull this out of committee? Miola, perfect. Any opposed to pulling that from committee?
I'm excited.
Okay. So, on the floor, let's find the piece here. Ordinance three dated 6/1/2022 is an ordinance approving the designation of DB Realty Solutions, Dmitri Bruski. Is an eligible and qualified project sponsor pursuant to Article 15 of general municipal law for the purpose of the sale of 125 to 125, 127 Grove Place. The sum is $750. Public hearing was just held. And, hang on a second, there is, there is something wrong with this. It says it will require a payment of $750, but then at the bottom it says $20,000. Urbanal?
The spelling is correct.
The spelling is correct!
Made you look twice though, right?
I don't, I don't have it.
I can go upstairs and get my stuff, but take it.
All right, so can we place this back into committee for a moment?
I'd like to make a motion to put this back into committee, please.
Thank you. Any opposed? All right, perfect.
Good catch, Mike.
All right, so we do have a common council guest this evening. And while we're waiting for the price of that property, love to bring him up. Eric Schuler is the PE and Director of Engineering for Mohawk Valley Water Authority, and he is here to present on the projects that some of us have been receiving calls on, and people may have seen going on in North Utica on Ashland Ave., was it?
Yeah.
And in South Utica on portions of Arlington and Crestway.
Great, thank you.
You could step to this side if you'd like, or...
Try to see how far away I can actually see this, so I can talk at the same time, so I'm not standing in front of everybody.
Okay.
Do you want to tell me where you want him to go?
Well, no, he's trying to figure out if he can go to the podium, I think, is what's going on here.
Is it?
Yeah, you're good.
All right, cool. Thank you for the invitation to speak tonight. I know when we do construction of things, there's impacts to residents, so it's probably good that we have this discussion to tell you about what we did this year, some trenchless rehab that we might do in the future, and we'll even chat about some lessons learned. So, I was told like 15 minutes. I'll try to keep it not longer than that. Agenda items real quick. We'll dive into trenchless technology intro. We'll talk about some key water main rehab methods that were considered. We'll discuss the 2022 rehab program details, and we'll talk about a little bit of the field process. That's what we probably got some calls about. I know that's what we got calls about too. And then I'll just give a quick update from a lead service standpoint, and I'll give a conclusion at the end of this. So, trenchless technology in general, the city of Utica, you guys are familiar with this. A lot of sewer rehab, sewer investigation, I think, has been conducted in the past. From our standpoint, Mohawk Water Authority, when we renew sections of our pipe, a lot of times historically it's been open cut. Dig up an entire street, an entire block, a street, make a big mess, dig up services. It obviously impacts residents through some time. So, why start to make a pivot towards trenchless-based utility repairs? Personally, I like trenchless-based solutions. Also, less of an impact to public, and hopefully less calls for everybody in this room, also less calls for our customer service, but we try to minimize the impact to the public. You can see this imagery here. Some of you hopefully can see it. This is the temporary services. You can see pipes running along the sides of the road above ground.
Yeah.
And that was a big concern of a lot of residents, oh, where are those pipes appearing above the ground all of a sudden? So, before we took a main out of service and rehabilitated it, we had to make sure everybody stayed in water the whole time. So, we rerouted water through temporary water mains above ground and fed services, backfeed through hose bits using that arrangement. The other reason why, especially this year, it was important to look from a trenchless technology standpoint is lead times. If I place an order for pipe today, I'll be lucky to see it next April. We had open cut work planned for this year. We placed our typical annual order in January, and we're lucky if we see that by September. So, that also helped necessitate, okay, let's get, let's get moving with this trenchless-based initiative. The other component, raw material costs. We're not immune to all the supply chain issues that are going on in the world. We have seen on our pipe bit, our metallic material costs escalate at a rate exceeding 20% on month-to-month basis. A lot of these trenchless technologies that I'm going to talk about today, they're a little more immune to supply chain issues. A lot of those are developed in this country, a little bit more control over material supply. So, that's another reason why to look at these technologies. So, before we select which method to use where, anywhere in our service territory, we want to look at what are our goals. We want something that's going to last us a long period of time. We don't want to go back 20 years from now, 40 years from now, and fix the, rehabilitate or fix the pipe again. We want something that's a semi-structural or full structural system when we're done. That's good for, say, 75 years. That's a pretty good metric we like to stick to. So therefore, once you determine what, what level of structural classification you want, which is based on existing condition of the host pipe, then you can move towards, okay, well, what specific type of material makes sense for that location we're looking at? And a lot what drives that is soil conditions, existing pipe material, age of material, number of services. There's lots of metrics at play. Top right photo is an example of a spray and place coating. That's what we used this year. That was the best-case solution for the three streets that were identified. Cure it in place, that's similar to the sewer rehabilitation that cities done in previous years. that's similar to the sewer rehabilitation cities done in previous years, so I think you're familiar with that. Flexible slip lining, that's the process of pulling an existing, or a new pipe through an existing pipe, and then allowing it to adhere to the host pipe. And then pipe bursting, that's where you take a hydraulic or hydraulic or pneumatic rig and essentially pulls a new pipe through an existing host pipe, exploding the existing host pipe into the surrounding soil. You're left with a, you're left with a new pipe. Kind of, with all these solutions, the key factor to take away from this is it's, all the work is done through small access pits, like typically five foot by seven foot, so you're not carrying up an entire roadway. For 2022, as I mentioned, we decided to go with a Class III spray-and-place pipe lining. Locations identified were Ashland Ave, Arlington Road, Crestway. Our locations for, whether it's this or for main replacement projects, it's based on over 30 years of data for main break frequency. We're actually lucky enough to still have some staff on hand that have been with the city water board, then the water authority for multiple decades, so we have quite a bit of good info there. But we also notice a correlation with age of materials correlating to break rate as well. Also, material pipe, aligned cast iron pipe, typically we've seen a higher, higher break frequency for it. These two photos, nobody's seen the inside of a 100-year-old water main. That was a section we took out from Arlington at the start of the project. You can see around the outside of that pipe, we still got good steel, good, good thickness all the way around. It's pretty consistent. Still got a pretty good structural capacity there. So, that's why going with a semi-structural lining that bonds to the remaining host pipe was a preferred solution for this year's program. No pictures here. 2022 rehab program details, that system that we implemented, it's a 100% solid epoxy resin, full NSF 61 approved for potable water use. The one thing I wanted to stress, we got a lot of calls from residents that were concerned, okay, is our water going to smell or taste funny, or will there be any other concerns that we have to be worried about? No, NSF is, it's very strict, rigorous certification process to make sure things are applicable for potable water use. Personally, I drink this water every day, all day. I definitely don't want to put something in there that's going to impact, taste, or older concerns. Neither does the health department. They check over our specs for every type of new material that we put within our system. So, the other reason for going with a sprayed-in-place system, it allows for minimal downtime and real quick return to service. When you do main replacement, you know, it's weeks, might be weeks and weeks of a road being pretty, pretty destroyed for pedestrians and vehicles driving through. This, you try to be like in and out within a week or so, which is preferred. The contractor that got awarded this year, they installed product worldwide. Lots of footage on their resume. Field process discussion, if anybody was driving around within your wards and you saw some of these access locations, there's just a, a scale of the size hole that's typically needed to dig down to the water main, cut out a section. And then the image on the right shows, and you can kind of see the location of a, of a pipe in the top section of that photo. You run a series of scrapers through. High prep, you can use high-pressure jetting combined with scrapers, and all that buildup, that tuberculation, that mineral buildup on the interior of the pipe, all gets pulled out, washed out. So, you're left with restored interior capacity of that pipe, you know, because that, because in reality, that pipe specifically on Arlington is probably down to more of a four-and-a-half inch diameter pipe, not a six-inch diameter pipe. And it, we also had a, had an issue with some contractor equipment that got stuck in the pipes because there was so much buildup. We had to dig some additional access pits and retrieve their equipment for them. But other than that, the process went pretty well. After we get through scraping, there's a series you got to go through to dry the pipe, like as dry as possible before we apply a coating system. To dry that pipe, what, what do we typically do? A series of foam pigs, squeegees to get, drag all the water out. There's a, there's a drying mechanism that's applied to get all the water out as well. Camera inspections are conducted to make sure that there's no water coming in, no water backfeeding from services, no sagging of the pipe that are holding water. And then, once we're all good, after we spend like two days on prep work, F1 segment, it takes about 15 minutes, if that, to apply the coating system. The rig on the bottom left there applies the resin at about 20,000 RPMs. Discharges at about 180 degrees Fahrenheit. It's a machine-controlled continuous pull between sections, so it's not a series of people that are trying to pull consistency consistently or anything like that. It's, it's all machine-controlled. And then you, then you wait, secure time, depending on the application method, nine to 18 hours. And here specifically, these are two segments on Arlington. That's what the finished interior looks like. You see no, no more tuberculation built up. We do a series of camera inspections, make sure there's no constrictions on any of the water surfaces that we lined past as well, and to make sure there's no imperfections in the line. And you can see the bottom right picture is the size of the patch, you know, we didn't dig up an entire roadway, dug an access pit, it didn't work, got out of town. The other thing that we personally got calls with, I don't know if any council members got calls with regarding water quality testing that takes place before this comes back online. So, before we, before we switched everybody off of temporary services, we do the, the same exact process that we do for new main installations or major water breaks. We chlorinate the main, we do a series of water quality tests. Every sample has to clear, and then the main comes back online. Then we remove the temporary services, and it's done. To dovetail from there into the service discussion, I know, I think it was a couple months ago, some lead stuff came up, I believe, to the common council. And just to update, our inventory works in good shape. We have field verification that'll take place in 2023. We're right on schedule to meet the final inventory requirements to be submitted to the regulatory agencies on the, on the state and federal level. And we've been coordinating with city engineering at WAF for potential lead service lines that are in the vicinity of the sewer project that I believe is starting up. And this rehabilitation effort in general, from a water main standpoint, we're planning on ramping this up. We did just, just under a mile this year. Next year, we'd like to be double that. I, I don't know specifically which method we're using yet. It's going to be dictated by a number of factors, but then ideally, we're going to escalate this initially over the next 10 years. Again, hopefully trying to keep impact to residents, businesses, et cetera, to a minimum. I don't know how it did on time, but that's...
You're fine, you're fine.
That's my high-level, 10-cent tour on this. My, my emails are always reachable if anybody has any questions.
Are you okay with the presentation being provided to the clerk to distribute to the common council? Is there anything in there you need to scrub?
Sure. Would you like me to send you PDF, or are you on the whole file?
Um, PDF is fine, thank you.
That's perfectly fine.
Alright, thank you very much.
Mr. President, can we ask questions?
Yeah, let's, let's, we won't go back and forth, but I'd like to go around. Katie, Bob, do you have anything? Alright, councilperson Friend?
So, thank you very much. I think we spoke on the phone at one point when this was going on, because I'm the South Utica person, so I was one of the people getting a lot of the phone calls along with, along with the president. So, um, this is great. I, I love the, you know, the application of trenchless technology. I love knowing that there's a Northeast Journal that comes out four times a year just on trenchless technology. That's great. So, in terms of, just to go back to make sure that I'm clear about something that you said earlier at the beginning of your presentation. When you use trenchless technology to replace, to replace lead service lines, what I was, no. Okay, is there a way, is there a trenchless technology in use currently that replaces lead service lines?
So, from a replace lead service lines, keep in mind the regulations, they don't want that lead in the ground.
Okay.
So, you have to...
That was my question.
To install new services, we, that's how we install new services, is trenchless. We have a, we have a machine that you have a small access pit, you drop it in near the main, and it sends what's called a bullet under the ground, and then comes out into your receiving pit.
Okay.
So, we do do that stuff.
What's on your desk line up?
So, I had, someone once described to me, so now I'm really curious to get from the, the actual engineer whether this is possible, that there was a way in which to, to replace a lead service line such that you're pulling out the old lead service line at the same time that you are, it is pulling through a new non-lead service line. Does that make sense? So that you do get that lead pipe out of the ground, but that it's still trenchless in the sense of it just, you know, like you're, you're pulling it through like you would pull a needle through fabric?
Well, there's lots of factors there.
Okay.
In a perfect world, that's still probably not going to happen, because you have a couple different scenarios at play. You got a curb box, right?
Right.
So, you're not going to pull that entire unit back through. And a lot of times when you're talking lead service replacements, it should be the whole thing, from house all the way up to main.
All the way up to the curb box, right.
So, really, that, that restriction can be doing that. But if you were to say isolate a section and try to pull that through, it, you'd have to have absolutely perfect soil conditions for it to work. But also, how do I put this nicely? Pipes weren't necessarily laid in a straight, consistent fashion, house to house.
Right.
So, it, it, it's very, it would be, it would be easier if everything was straight and narrow, but you're talking of navigating bends.
So, as far as you know, no one is replacing lead service lines with this, with a trenchless technology?
Not consistency, not consistently with, I guess, a high score.
Okay, good to know. Okay, thank you very much. The only other thing I would say is it would, I would love it if the next time you come and do this in South Utica, give us a heads up in advance, and then I won't have to bother you on the phone and, in order to figure out what's going on, in order to explain it to constituents.
So, that's, that's fine. What our process typically is, we send, whether it's our plans or big safety operations, we send it to the city engineer.
Okay.
And we, we don't usually play a, a big game, or so. But we'll, again, make sure that's done in the future. We'll make sure...
No, that's...
...mugging the staff at it.
That's fine, actually.
So, councilperson Friend?
You don't need to do anything different, yeah.
Just, just so you're aware, I did address Mohawk Valley Water Authority in the appropriate department. Obviously, Eric is the Director of Engineering, not necessarily Communication, Marketing, et cetera. So, I did take that to a different avenue.
Fair enough.
Yeah, for our neighborhood, particularly.
Thank you very much.
Anyone have anything else?
Just got one little question.
Yeah, go for it.
You know, sometimes people, they tell me that the water smells like fish, and other times they tell me the water smells like bleach. Is there any reason for them to say that?
Well, uh, no, but I'm not the water quality director, so I would say any questions related to the pace and order we have to route through our water quality director. If you can answer that, I'll be happy.
Anyone else? Alright, thank you. This was extremely informative. One of the biggest things people like in Utica is the water quality, because we got great water. It's why our pizza tastes good. It's why our sauce tastes good. So, thank you for coming in and showing us what you were doing so that people can remain confident in our water supply. Thank you.
No problem. Thank you. Have a good night.
Alright. Good. So, are we gonna, would you like to move back to the piece we have in committee that we just held the public hearing on?
Yep.
Alright, is there a motion?
You want a motion to amend, Michael?
Um, yes.
Okay, last, last, from the last line, another...
Well, no, hang on, we got to pull out of committee first.
Oh, okay. Motion, motion to remove from committee?
Second.
Anyone opposed? Alright, amended.
Uh, another future to be ordained, purchase price of the above property, instead of $20,000, change it to $750.
Second.
Any opposed? Alright, it's hereby amended. Ordinance three is on the floor for a vote. Next order of business is communications from the mayor. And I won't forget the reports from the city officers, just so you're all aware. Alright, so, June 15th, 2022, from Mayor Robert Palmieri, "Non-containerized green waste pickup ended last month. All green waste must be containerized, as citations are being issued for properties that are not in compliance. Legislation has been submitted to the council calling for a public hearing to discontinue several streets, which is needed for the overall development of the hospital project. A public meeting is taking place tomorrow, June 16th, at 5:30 at City Hall, to share findings of the housing study the city procured. The study was done to assess current and projected demographics and household characteristics, and to guide the city in developing the housing that will be needed for current prospective residents. City Hall will be closed on Monday, June 20th, in observance, in observance of Juneteenth. This is a holiday that was negotiated with Civil Service Employees Association. There will be a press conference tomorrow announcing the city has formally taken ownership of the 1933 building from the New York State Canal Corporation, a major step in the development of Utica Harbor. In addition to taking ownership of this property, the city is also announcing the abatement and demolition of two structures located at the harbor. Demolition is scheduled to take place Monday, June 20th." Apparently, those guys do have a day off. Liberty Affordable Housing will be hosting a groundbreaking ceremony for the historical Olbeston Apartments, 1431 Genesee Street, on June 22nd, 2:00 p.m. "This is a major milestone in the restoration of the building and another example of how funding from the Utica Prosperity Initiative is fostering transformational changes for our community. All members of the common council are invited and welcome to attend. A reminder for anyone wanting to participate in the Independence Day parades, to register online at Utica Center for Development website, www.ucdevolution.org-parades. The Independence Day Parade is taking place on Monday, July 4th, at 10:00 a.m., with an after-party in Proctor Park at 7:00 p.m. The after-party will have food trucks, oh, food trucks, sorry. One thing. Food trucks, vendors, music, and fireworks at dusk. Last month, the city announced it was seeking nominations of individuals from nonprofit organizations to serve on the civilian public safety advisory board. A total of five nominees were submitted, and the police reform committee will pick two of these nominees to serve on the inaugural advisory board. That concludes the mayor's message." I would like to add one more thing about the green waste from the council president. If people are not aware and they are listening, after the green waste pickup is concluded, you can always call the Solid Waste Authority if you do have shrubs, bushes, trees, et cetera, that are not able to be containerized, and you can do off-cycle pickups, which they will come and measure, and for a fairly, fair, I should just say a fair fee, they will collect whatever you put out there as far as green waste, which, which will help throughout the year. You can have stuff picked up at the curb, you just got to do it through the Solid Waste Authority in the off-season. Alright, that's the mayor's message. Do we have a cash report?
The city of Utica cash report for May 2022 is 62.8 million received and filed.
Okay. I'm going to go to the table here. Deputy Chief Noonan, you have your report.
Mr. President. Um, Utica Police Department's hiring. Deadline to apply to take the civil service exam is August 19th. Test is on the 17th of September. We're, we're...
Yes, I do.
Hey, uh, what's it?
Oh, um, it's reports from the city officers.
Yep.
Yeah.
So, upwards of probably going to hire anywhere from 10 to 20 officers. So, if you know anyone who wants to take the test, please encourage them to do so.
Thank you very much. And I'll go to public comment period after reports from the city officers. Thank you. Corporation Council, Stephanie Giorgio.
Nothing to report.
Thank you. Commissioner Thomas?
Nothing to report.
Assistant Chief Noonan.
Utica Fire Department's not hiring currently over here.
Would have been.
We are promoting, so.
Okay.
Tomorrow morning, 9:30, right here in this room. Five lieutenants and a captain. You're all certainly delighted to come. I'm sure you'll get some thank yous, you guys get promoted, so.
Thank you very much. Alright, we're going to move on to public comment period. First guest this evening is Al LaSalle.
Don't think you had a choice.
Well, we changed the order of business, so they were getting a little impatient over there. I understand. It's alright. Yes, I do. The public comment, uh, the common council provide you a copy of public comment period rule. Will you abide by this? Pardon? Will you abide by this? Public comment period rule?
You have.
The rule? Yeah. Section 3244. Yes, alright. Please state your name and you may begin. Thank you.
My name is Alfred LaSalle. I prefer Al. I reside here in God's country, Utica, New York, on the west side of the city. Now, I would like to talk about the, the council has to run for office... Now I would like to talk about the, the council has to run for office every two years. So you get a couple new people, takes them a year to get accustomed to the council. Then the second year, they're out campaigning. If they get beat, we lost two, we lost two years for no reason at all. I don't know what the procedure is, but whether it has to come from the public, to the council, to the, to be voted on, to change it from two years to four years, I, I don't know what the actual procedure would be. You look a little confused up there, sir.
You talking about me?
Yeah.
No? I'm, I'm listening. Thank you.
Okay.
I was looking to the body of the council to make sure everything was all right for you. You may continue.
Well, besides, besides the terms, they should see, and when I say they, the council should see if the city could install some speakers. One here, one there, one, I mean, I'm wearing a hearing aid and I still can't hear what you say. It's, it's, it's not very funny. It's, it's serious, you know? The older you get, the more you lose. You lose your hearing, you lose your sight, and you come to the council and lose your mind and, uh. I think everything is progressing fairly well. I ask you please keep up the good work, council. Thank you. I thank you one and all. Thanks.
Thank you. Hi, our next and final speaker this evening, Ron Vincent. Common council is providing you a copy of section 3244, public comment period rule. Are you in agreement with this?
Yes, I am.
You may begin.
After hearing your literature from the mayor about the green waste, it's one of the two things I came here to speak about tonight. For the last three, four years, I've been in front of the council here saying, the green waste pickup deadline is past. When are they gonna start citing people? Well, they don't. They always send the DPW out for two, three, four, five weeks more and keep picking up this stuff. Well, in North Utica alone, according to the paper that we got in the mail, our last pickup for green waste just left at the curb, not in a can, was three weeks and two days ago today. You ride around North Utica, there's piles of green waste all over. The people know that if they leave it out there two, three, four, five weeks from now, it'll still be picked up. But this year, it's not being picked up. This is something I've been encouraging for a long time. You give them a date, make them stick to it, make them get out there and find people and get this stuff taken care of. It says here, green waste must be in a container. It's not. That's between the date of May 28th and September 30th. Fault green waste piles put out during the rest of the year will be cited. Really? By whom? It's been three weeks, two days, these people aren't getting cited and they just keep adding to their piles and adding to their piles. Here's a common council that makes laws, the city makes laws, we have all kinds of departments that are supposed to be enforcing them. I haven't seen any codes cars going around stopping at these homes, dropping off citations. If you got a law, let's enforce it. Second issue, this is also to a North Utica situation. Herkimer Road, it's called Route 5S, New York State Highway. They've got new stripes painted, they got new signs up, they got new lights up. This has been going on since last fall. The street just got painted within the last couple of weeks. They got all these no left-hand turns, right-hand turn only, and people are disobeying them all the time. I've never seen anybody get pulled over since these new signs have gone up. You come out of the nu- uh, excuse me, the, um, Big Lot Shopping Center onto Herkimer Road, you look at the red flashing light above your head, it says no left-hand turn. You look at the sign right outside your car, it says right-hand turn only. The light up there on Herkimer Road in both directions is a flashing caution, which means be careful, but you can go through. But no, these people are leaving the shopping center and they're going straight across up Van Rensselaer Road. On my way over to this meeting tonight, the car in front of me almost broadsided a car that pulled out of the shopping center to go up Van Rensselaer and would've been T-boned. He slammed on his brakes. I didn't have to hit mine as hard because I wasn't following that closely. But no tickets are being issued. I never see anybody pulled over. I never see a police car around there. So I came up with another bright idea, maybe the common council can help me out with it. It's a New York State Highway. New York State. Happens to be in the city of Utica. Maybe we should get the state police in there to check it out and write some tickets. I'm gonna give Mary Ann Button Sean a call tomorrow and see if she will assist me and maybe we can get something done about it. And if you people would stop over there and see some of the things that are going on, maybe you'd agree with me. Thank you very much.
Thank you. All right, that concludes public comment period. Want to move on to petitions, remind us for citizens appeals. Uh, I'm gonna kick it off today. No, in all seriousness, uh, in about a week and a half's time, the Utica Little League's regular season is gonna be concluding and, uh, we do have, uh, the Utica Little League Blue Sox Night, uh, this Friday. First pitch goes out at 6:45. Um, all of the, um, league's children that are playing, uh, their coaches and their families are obviously invited to attend the picnic and will participate in pre-game festivities, training, little activities with the, uh, Blue Sox, which is great. Uh, the kids love it. They think they're like in the major leagues when they're out there. And, uh, I just wanted to announce this because it's a great game. If you haven't been to the Blue Sox games in a while, it's a great game to watch. Um, it's still a public game for everyone else to attend, so if people would like come down to the Blue Sox Stadium, the, uh, at Murnein Field, um, come check it out. So it's this Friday. It's our end of year picnic in the public, can also attend the game. So just wanted to put that out there because the kids had a great time this, great, great year this season. Uh, First District, Councilmember Key Aile, you have the floor.
Thank you, Mr. President. Uh, nothing to report tonight.
Thank you. Second District, Councilmember Robert Burmester, you have the floor.
Thank you, Mr. President. I have nothing. Thank you.
Thank you. Third District, Councilmember Sloss Brad.
Thank you, Mr. President. Um, I wanted to, uh, in the spirit of the president's invitation, I wanted to remind people of a ton of great things going on in Utica this weekend. Um, on Friday night, there are tours downtown of, uh, the parts of Utica that were used as part of the Underground Railroad, really important part of our history that we all get to be really proud of. On Saturday, right here in front of City Hall in Hannah Park, is World Refugee Day Festival. Uh, that goes from 12 to 4:00 and if you get here early, you get to see people being sworn in, um, as new citizens, which is really cool. And then all day on Saturday from 12 to 8:00 in Chancellor Park is the Juneteenth Festival. Um, it was, um, it was, um, a great event last year. I expect it to be even better this year. That's 12 to 8:00. And then on Sunday, Munson Williams is participating in Juneteenth festivities by having a fashion show in the afternoon. I don't know the time of that. And then on Monday night, the Levitt Concert Series, um, the, the 10 concerts in a row that happen all summer long in Copernic Park kickoff on Monday night. So it's a fun-packed weekend here in Utica. Um, these are all really great events. Um, Juneteenth is especially, um, important this year because this is the first year that Utica will be honoring or marking, uh, this, um, particular, this important holiday, um, after the council last year passed to make it an official, uh, city of Utica holiday. And Monday, City Hall is closed, um, and, uh, and that's a great thing too. So lots of good things to do in Utica this weekend. That's all I have, Mr. President. Thank you.
Thank you. Fourth District, Councilmember Majority Leader Frank Miola.
Um, I'd just like to address the green waste pickup. Um, yes, the last day of pickup was the 27th, um, but the problem was that, uh, many people like North Utica's got a different last day for pickup, the east side. So I think that, uh, next time, maybe we can clarify that and tell each area that, uh, the last pickup day for green waste, so it's not just one day and people do, they did get confused this year. Um, with that said, they, the mayor is citing people. I got four complaints, so I know, I know he's doing them, so you don't have to worry about that, Ron. He is doing that. Um, also, um, the most important thing, if people are leaving their grass clippings out there, that's what's plugging our storm sewers, so please pick up your grass clippings and containerize them as soon as possible. The rainstorms do bring those glass cl- clippings into our, uh, storm sewers and of course that plugs it and the potential for flooding increases. So, um, those of us who have, um, grass clippings out in the street corners, please pick them up as soon as possible. Um, thirdly, they also take, I'm pretty sure down in Nite County, the recycling plant, um, green waste for free. I'm pretty sure you guys got a trucks or trailers or whatever you want to do. If you want to bring it down there, they make mulch for us. So if anybody needs a ton of mulch, I think it's pretty cheap. It's all smoking and really, even though it's really hot out, they got this black mulch, a big black pile and it's, they make all that green waste, they recycle it, so. Um, and it's pretty cheap too, if anybody wants green mulch. So, um, that's another thing. If, uh, as our president said, um, if you don't want to do any moving of the green waste that is in front of your home, that's, uh, I guess still sitting there, you're lucky you didn't get cited, but, um, you can also call Nite County Waste Authority, they are on Genesee Street, and they will come and give you a quote on the price of picking it up if you don't have any transportation on it. Um, and just a final thing, 4th of July is coming. Ladies and gentlemen, of course, uh, fireworks are illegal in the city of Utica and, uh, you will be fined if you're caught shooting fireworks, so, um, please be very careful. Um, we don't want, uh, anybody getting hurt during this 4th of July and, uh, think about our children and our neighbors. Thank you very much.
All right, Fifth District.
Uh, thank you, Mr. President.
Councilmember Venice Urban, you have the floor.
I'm the, I've been talking about this the last couple meetings, the Run Against Racism will be, um, this Saturday, it's still on. Um, I'm not running in it. I'm gonna get up and make a speech and go back and sit on my porch and watch them running around Johnson Park, but it's gonna be a lot of fun. I think they got enough kids, um, to do some walking and stuff. I heard there's about 80 to 90 people that's gonna be running, so it should be interesting. Um, the day before, we already have, um, the city, city of Utica committed to doing, um, some cleanup on their, on the route and residents, uh, we've been going to residents, talking to them about cutting the grass and doing stuff, so hopefully, um, it'll look good, hopefully, and that's all I have.
Thank you very much. Sixth District, Councilmember Joe Beecher, you have the floor.
Thank you, Mr. President. Uh, I just want to follow up on the green waste real quick too. Uh, the reason, I agree with Mr. Vincent, but the city this year is very strict on it. That's why there was piles all over the place. And I also received, I wish Marcus was here tonight, I received four calls from people in your neighborhood, because I was in your neighborhood today and there's a lot of piles. There's four different people that called and, you know, they have, uh, they got fined $250. Obviously, if they pick it up, they're not gonna have to pay the fine. Uh, the other thing, what Councilman, uh, Miola talked about, Dave Short was on TV and he did explain it. It wasn't a, it was not a cutoff date, it was the last date that they came in your area. So it wasn't written on the paper that they gave us, but they did kind of explain it. So, um, I'm glad that I see all the piles there and that we did not cave this year to go back and pick it up because, um, that defeats the whole purpose. That's all I have tonight. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember at large, Minority Leader Mark Williamson, you have the floor.
Thank you, Mr. President. I have nothing to pass.
Thank you. Councilwoman at large, Samantha Plasmo Testa, you have the floor.
Thank you. I just want to talk about green waste briefly, just kidding. Um, no, I, I just, a couple announcements. Um, we are having our first, um, flood mitigation task force meeting will be June 29th. The mayor made his appointment, um, inside these council chambers at 5:00. Um, I'll be sending out a notice to everybody, but I know that, um, I won't be in time for another meeting to make that announcement. Um, I also want to give a shout out to the Utica Little League. They had Public Safety Night. I want to thank the Fire Department and Police Department for coming in, making donations for, um, hot dogs and bottles of water. It was a great event. Everybody enjoyed themselves and the team that I coach is Local 32 and we beat Team PBA, so that was a, a nice little win, so I just wanted to rub that in there. And that's it. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you. Councilman at large, President Proton, Frank DeBranco, how you doing?
I think you had tonight. Thank you.
Thank you.
You sure you want to talk about green waste? Everybody else has.
All right. That concludes petition, remind us for citizens appeals. I'm gonna ask the council before we start any of the other legislation, that's probably what he's gonna tell me. All right, well, there you go. Yeah, you wanna make a motion for a local law?
Motion, motion, make a motion to move local law to the table, sir.
All right, so we're gonna make a motion to pull local law.
From committee? All right, so that first?
Well, you can do it all in one motion. I'm trying to remember the name here of the local law.
Local law, section 5.22, city of Utica charter to change the taxable status date from the city of Utica from August 1st to March 1st.
Okay, it's been pulled from committee and the motion was to pull from committee and lay it on the table. Is there a second?
Second.
Go with the.
Let it play again.
You look like you're gonna ask a question, though. That's why I was, I was pausing here. Councilman Williamson, do you, do you have a question?
No.
Oh, it looked like you were like getting ready to ask something. All right, I'm gonna go with the.
Grab paper, sit there on that motion.
Oh, you got, they already have the, the second. Your votes. It's for vote. Pull from committee and lay it on the table.
Nine days to lay on the table.
All right, very good. Can I, uh, have that so I can read it in the record? Thank you. All right, a local law amending section 5 dot 022 of the city of Utica charter to change the taxable status date for the city of Utica from August 1st to March 1st. Be it enacted by the common council of the city of Utica, section 1, 5 dot 022 of the Utica City Charter is hereby amended to read as follows. Section 5 dot 022, preparation review and, uh, preparation or review of assessment roles. In the manner provided in the real property tax law or other general laws of the state relative to the listing, valuation, and assessment of property for purposes of taxation, the assessor shall proceed to make correct review, complete, and verify the assessment roles for the city. The taxable status of real property in the city shall be determined annually as of March 1st. The annual assessment of the property in the city for the succeeding fiscal year shall be made by the assessor by March 1st and the tentative assessment role shall be completed on or before May 1st. The assessor shall cause the notice of completion of tentative assessment role to be published as required by law, et cetera. Where's the other piece of this?
Second page. Um. It just says for the local law to table. Completion and verification of the final assessment role.
Yeah, don't get the other half. Hang on a second.
I'm fine. Just trying to speed it.
Thanks. There we are, there we are. All right. Completion and verification of the final assessment role shall be filed, honored before July 1st with the city clerk, that will remain 10 days before public inspection, et cetera. Section 2, the local law shall become effective. Well, that's gonna have to change.
Uh-uh, final form. What do you got on it?
It says this local law shall become effective March first, twenty, oh, twenty twenty-three. I thought it said twenty twenty-two. All right, we're good. We're good. All right, it's all set.
Reader record and vote it.
Yeah, we're good.
Rowing to lay it on the table.
Yeah, it's on the table, yes. It's not passed yet, it's on the table in its final form. Okay. Proposed Resolution One, Resolution Providing for a Public Hearing on the Discontinuance of Carton Avenue from Lafayette Street to State Street as reviewed in pre-meeting conference. This is a calling for the public hearing, which will be held on August third, twenty twenty-two, at seven PM in the common council chambers. Your votes. Uh, we actually, we have a motion from Miola.
Second.
We have a second to move it from Councilwoman Colasmo Testa. Your votes. Sorry, I almost fell back in a moment.
Nineties adopted.
I got you.
Yeah. Proposed Ordinance Number Two is the ordinance providing for the discontinuance of Carton Avenue from Lafayette Street to State Street and the conveyance of the same. Is there a motion to place that in committee?
Motion.
Okay, introduce, place it in committee. Did you guys get that? All right. Any opposed? It's in committee. Proposed Resolution Number Three is the resolution providing for the public hearing on the discontinuance of Cornelius Street from Lafayette Street to Oriskney Street. That public hearing will be held on August third at seven PM in the common council chambers. We have a motion to move that from Miola. Second from Colasmo Testa. Any opposed? Oh, I'm sorry, your votes on the table. This is the public hearing.
Nineties adopted.
Thank you. Proposed Ordinance Four, ordinance providing for the discontinuance of Cornelius Street from Lafayette Street to Oriskney Street and sale the same.
Motion to refer to committee.
All right, perfect. Any opposed? All right, moving on. Proposed Resolution Five, Resolution Providing for a Public Hearing, the Discontinuance of Lafayette Street from Broadway to State Street. Again, August third, seven PM, common council chambers. It's moved by Miola.
Second.
Oh, Brenda's the second on that one.
Three for three, three for three.
Councilman Beechers.
Nineties adopted.
Okay. Proposed Ordinance Six, ordinance providing for the discontinuance of Lafayette Street from Broadway to State Street and sale the same.
Motion to refer to committee.
I'm going to go with Miola on that one. All right, second from Colasmo Testa. Any opposed? It's in committee. Okay, Proposed Ordinance Seven is not standard stuff, so do we have a motion to waive the Thursday rule?
Motion.
On seventh, it says...
The handicap?
Didn't say it needed number seven, just number eight.
Oh, I thought that one came in after Thursday. All right, that's fine.
Is there a motion, a second?
Is there a motion to move handicap parking locations at seven eleven Mary Street?
Motion.
Okay, we have a motion from Iola, second from Miola. I'll read this. Handicap parking locations, be it ordained that section two dash sixteen dash three seven eight Schedule W handicap parking locations be amended to include the following. Mary Street handicap parking for one vehicle, location seven eleven Mary Street. Be it further ordained that the proper signage shall be erected where necessary. Your votes.
Nineties adopted.
Okay.
Mr. President, I have a motion to waive the Thursday rule.
Okay, second?
Second.
Any opposed? That rule is waived. Let's see, who would like to move this piece of legislation, adoption of the twenty twenty-two Onata County Hazard Mitigation Plan?
I'll spot you there, Joe.
I'll second it.
Okay.
Oh, I'm sorry. I'll, I'll spot you there, Joe.
Okay.
Can we just put for the record, too, to make sure that Mr. Mahoney, we get a copy of the actual report, please?
Sure.
Send him an email, just follow up.
Okay.
Thank you. And green waste pickup.
All right, I'm going to read this real quick. Adoption of twenty twenty-two Onata County Hazard Mitigation Plan, whereas the City of Utica collectively with the Onata County Soil and Water Conservation District, Onata County Department of Emergency Services, and Onata County has gathered information and prepared the twenty twenty-two Onata County Hazard Mitigation Plan. Now therefore be it resolved by the common council that the City of Utica deems the twenty twenty-two Onata County Hazard Mitigation Plan a multi-jurisdictional, as multi-jurisdictional, and adopts it as its own natural hazard mitigation plan and resolves to execute the actions in the plan, adopted this fifteenth day of June twenty twenty-two at a meeting of the City of Utica Common Council. Your votes.
Nineties adopted.
Anything else this evening?
Can I motion to close?
Second.
Good. Have a great night. Definitely showing.